I want to adjourn the meeting of the Placer County Planning Commission for Thursday, May 27, 2021. If everyone could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic, which is the one which has visible liberty and peace.
Sue Roakol, please.
Yes, good morning. Mr. Cannon.
Here.
Mr. Dematte.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Woodward.
Here.
Mr. Hersog.
Here.
Mr. Sevison.
President.
Mr. Haugie.
Here.
Thank you.
And we welcome Larry to the deus today.
It's so nice to see all your smiling faces. Oh, my goodness sakes. I didn't know you were all still alive.
All right. Welcome, everyone. It's important for Placer County to conduct our business to ensure essential services for our citizens. We're doing everything we can to facilitate residents staying at home and physical distancing. We encourage the public to engage in the process. With that in mind, our public comment for this meeting will be offered in person and through a remote virtual process. Citizens who wish to comment today should be prepared to comment via the Zoom platform. To join virtually online, click on the link on the Planning Commission homepage. Please make sure your microphone is muted. You may also call us using our toll-free numbers to hear the meeting at 888-788-0099 or 877-853-5247, and please enter the webinar ID 93573970840. Please press *6 to mute yourself. If you would like to make public comment virtually, please raise your hand with the hand icon at the bottom of the page. If you are calling in, please press *9 to raise your hand. Please be prepared to speak at the time I open the public comment for the specific item you'd like to address, which may include the public comment for matters not included on the agenda, a consent item, or a timed item. If attending in person today, we kindly request that once you have commented on your item, return to your seat or leave the hearing room from the exit-only door to accommodate for physical distancing and allow for others to provide in-person public comment. Each commenter is entitled to three minutes of comment time. Thank you for your patience as we work to ensure the safety and health of all meeting participants and ensure that each citizen who wishes to comment has the opportunity to do so. So at this time, if EJ would provide his report.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. EJ Yvaldi with the Planning Services Division. So we are making some strides at getting back to normal business operations here at the Community Development Resource Agency. Over the last few weeks, we have opened our doors, front doors back to the public. Here in Auburn, as well as the Tahoe City Office, the public can either drop in or make an appointment Monday through Thursday from the hours of 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The public can also continue to make virtual appointments throughout the week. Let's see, our staff is also returning to the office, transitioning back to a hybrid telework schedule over the next month, so we can look forward to that. And for Planning Commission meetings, we'll continue virtual and in-person meetings. As restrictions ease, then we'll get back to the, you know, we'll probably increase over the 25% levels, so stay tuned for that. Let's see, board meeting update. Upcoming meetings, AT&amp;T Cell Tower Pill, June 8. Matranga Pill is scheduled for June 22, and then the Baseline Commercial Center project is scheduled for July 6. And then upcoming Planning Commission schedule, our next meeting, July or June 10. We have a light agenda, but then the June 24th, I would plan on a full day, so a pretty busy meeting for that.
You said full day?
Other than that? What's that?
You said full day for the 24th?
A full day, June 24th.
Okay. Is that the redistricting? Is that the?
So we do have the redistricting process on that meeting agenda, County Council. I think we're also going to be doing a training for the Planning Commission on that date, plus there's several projects as well, so we'll try to break that up. You know, if it's too long of a day, break it up with a recess in between, so.
All right.
EJ, one question for you. On the baseline, we got a note yesterday for Public Records, you know, check on issues associated with baseline or correspondence associated with baseline. What was the real reason that staff asked for an extension on the baseline project to a later date?
Did we receive correspondence late on that project? I don't know if that was the day before or?
Afternoon before.
Afternoon, so after review of the correspondence, staff just wanted to make sure we were prepared and had time to, you know, respond before we?
And that was from an attorney? Okay. Okay.
All right.
Any other reports?
That's it.
Any questions of the Planning Director from Commission? All right. I will now open the public comment for any matters not on the Planning Commission agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? All two? Nope. Mary, Sue, anyone raising their hand? Okay.
Mr. Garabedian, please state your name for the record.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Garabedian for Placer County tomorrow. Hope you're all doing fine. Three quick points. First, I think the public should be allowed to observe the Development Review Committee Secondly, I'm wondering what the photo is, where the photo was taken that we saw waiting for you to come on. It looks like a stream with a house back in the woods there. And so finally, when somebody is speaking who doesn't have a label in front of them, sometimes it's hard to know who's speaking, and people might identify themselves when that's appropriate. Thank you. We'll be talking about all three agenda items today.
All right. Thank you. Are there other persons wishing to speak?
Not at this time.
Okay. With no over comment, the public comment for matters not on the agenda is closed. We will now move to the consent agenda. Would any Commissioners like to remove the one item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there anyone in the public who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda? I don't see anyone in the audience. Sue, do you have anyone raising their hand? All right. So the consent agenda, is there a motion? We have a move?
Seconds, Mr. Cannon.
We have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
I have a first from Mr. Sevison, a second from Mr. Cannon, a vote from Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Dematte.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Woodward.
Yes.
Mr. Hersog.
Yes.
Mr. Sevison.
Yes.
Mr. Haugie.
Yes.
Thank you.
We are now moving on to our first timed item, the Dawes Bear Creek Subdivision, Lot 113 subdivision map modification. Members of the public may now raise their hands or press *9 if you're calling in to begin queuing in for public comment on the item, which will not begin until the item presentation is complete. Heather Beckman, Senior Planner, will be presenting this item.
Thank you. Good morning. As you said, I'm Heather Beckman, Senior Planner out of the Tahoe City Office, and I'm presenting the Dawes subdivision map modification. If you could go to the next slide, please. Thank you. Thank you. And so this is the first of three map modifications that you'll be seeing today. So the property that is the subject of this application is located at 1990 John Scott Trail. That's located in Alpine Meadows and in the Bear Creek subdivision. You'll see that the property in question is outlined in blue. The yellow shading on this figure shows the RS, or residential zoning, which is the zoning for the subject property, and the green shading is open space zoning. Next slide, please. So here is a figure of the 1963 approved Bear Creek subdivision map showing Lot 113. So again, the property that's the subject of this application. And I just wanted to note that this subdivision does have a matched 30-foot front setback, and that's the trigger for this map modification today. Next slide, please. So this shows the existing and proposed development on the site. So existing today is a single-family dwelling with an uncovered parking pad that accommodates one vehicle, as well as an open-air entry deck to the property. So currently, the property is non-conforming as it relates to parking, as there's only one parking, onsite parking space, and two are required, and there's no protected ingress or egress into the residence itself. The proposed project is a single-car garage with open-air parking in front of it, as well as a covered front entry deck into the property. So the project will actually bring the property into conformance as it relates to parking, so there will be two onsite parking spaces, and it will provide that protected ingress and egress into the residence. As you can see, oh, back one slide, please, to the site plan. Thank you. The detached garage is, well, it's detached, so it's separated from the existing residence. And so the applicant did explore alternative locations for the garage, meaning closer to the house or even attached to the house, but there were several complications with that. The first being, even if the garage were attached to the residence, it would still encroach into that 30-foot front setback by about two to three feet and would still trigger a map modification. Secondly, there are a large number of windows on that side of the residence where the garage would be moved closer to or attached to the residence. Those windows provide the majority of the natural lighting for that side of the house, and so that would, having the garage closer would essentially eliminate a good portion of that natural lighting. And then finally, this is a steeply downsloping lot, and so moving that garage closer to the residence would result in about 10% to 20% more fill material being required and environmental impacts associated with that. So as a result, there are some physical constraint locations for the placement of the garage, thus the proposal that is before you today. They are seeking a 17.3-foot front setback for that garage, whereas 30 feet is otherwise required. And I did do research on other properties in the neighboring area and found that we do have several previous approvals for residential encroachments into the front setback. So next slide, please. This is a photo just showing you the existing site conditions, so you see a portion of that parking pad and the open-air entry into the residence. And next slide, please. Before I get into the recommendations, I do want to say that early this morning, I did receive a voicemail from Mr. Michael Garabedian about this project. I believe he has left, has a similar comment for at least one of the other map modifications that you will hear later today. His concern was about the fire severity designation for the property and the impacts of this addition on fire. The fire designation for this property, it's in the state responsibility area designated very high. Having said that, with all of our projects, we do route them to the local fire jurisdictions for their review and comments. We do have correspondence on file from the North Tahoe Fire Protection District stating that they did not take exception to this project, so they would support it and just require that it go through their normal review and permitting process to make sure that it meets all fire code and access code. So with that in mind, staff is recommending that your commission take the following actions. The first would be to find that the project is categorically exempt under CEQA based on a Class III exemption. And then the next slide, please. And then also to approve the subdivision map modification for Lot 113 in the Bear Creek subdivision. It would be for a 17.3-foot front setback, whereas 30 feet is otherwise required. It would be for the construction of the single-car garage and the covered front entry and is supported by the findings and subject to the conditions contained in the staff report. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you. Questions of the Commission?
I have a question. In your examination of other lots, and I do recall, I think we have approved setback variances in this subdivision prior, how far back are they set back, and how does this compare to those other setbacks?
I must say, I don't have the exact numbers at the tip of my mind, but they were commensurate. So I think we usually see them somewhere kind of in, seeking an encroachment, probably somewhere in the 10 to 18, 20-foot range.
All right. All right. If there are no other comments from the Commission at this time, we'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Seeing none, we see a hand up, so. Sue?
Mr. Garabedian, please state your name. You'll have three minutes.
Hi, Mike Garabedian, Placer County tomorrow. I assume I'm being heard now. So this has a very steep upslope from the road, and putting a structure there is quite obviously going to enhance the fire insecurity of this building, adding a structure that is not only blow on the steep slope below it, but close to the structure where embers from, if that caught fire, would readily ignite the building. So it really concerned about the lack of attention to how this would affect this or perhaps neighboring properties. We don't know how close the neighboring property, any structure there, might be to the garage. So let's look at what this is. The county code modification of map restrictions, which I think what we're doing, 1604.140, it says this is to be processed in accordance with the variance provisions. So the variance provision in question, 1604.130, it requires it to be granted only when, because of special circumstances applicable to the property, including size, proposed population, density, shape, topography, location, or surroundings, and criteria of the land development manual. Because of those things, a deviation from the provisions of this section would be beneficial to the health, safety, peace, or welfare of the property in the vicinity of the county generally. Clearly, this structure is not beneficial to the structure in terms of fire prevention. It's just the opposite. So there, obviously, none of these findings have been made about this, what the special circumstances are. Maybe some of you may have them in mind, maybe, but it's been done elsewhere. But, so the findings are not adequate to approve this without explaining what the special circumstances are in the motion or in the approval. The reference to the fire department and their later approval, I don't think is adequate. To have this categorically exempt with potential fire hazards, I think, is a problem. The kind of thing that's needed for this, as well as for others, is to know if there is a fire-safe community, a fire-wise community here, or a, what kind of protection there may be in the area in terms of fuel breaks and that kind of thing, if there is, under the International Association Fire Police, if they, if one of their programs similar to fire-wise are in effect. So there's, the absence of any mention or any attention to this, I think, requires this, if not to go back to the Development Committee, certainly for your consideration to get the adequate staff work on this that is really essential to make the findings that this is a special situation. A special situation on the subdivision?
Your three minutes is up, Ms. Garabedian.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there other comments? Okay.
Mr. Altman, please state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Brad Altman. I'm a professional engineer in Tahoe City, and I'm an engineer of record on this project. Thanks for the opportunity to give you words here. The Board of Supervisors should know that this project has already been approved by the Bear Creek Planning Commission, which is the homeowners association in responsible charge of this area. And as some of you probably know from experience, that Bear Creek is a very thorough and professionally organized homeowners association. Secondly, North Tahoe Fire Protection District has already done what's called their Landscape Access Residential Review. That's LAR for short. They have already reviewed this and approved the project. So what they specifically look at in the LAR is the ability for the fire department to access the property, meaning fire engine access, fire hydrant flow rate, and the distance of the fire hydrant to the all points of the structure. And North Tahoe Fire has found that this project is in compliance and conformance with all of the California Fire Code and amendments adopted by the North Tahoe Fire Protection District. So that has already been approved, and I believe I've sent that to Ms. Beckman as well. So just a couple of other issues regarding the variance and things like that. This is a special circumstance in that Placer County has historically viewed safe access and parking requirement in the high-snow zone area that is Alpine Meadows. Currently, this project is non-conforming with only one parking space, so it is actually a benefit to Placer County to have two off-street parking spaces to facilitate the removal of snow. We have still accommodated all of the snow storage requirements that Placer County requires. It's actually a downsloping lot, not an upsloping lot. That's a correction. If you look at the site plan, it slopes down from the street, not up. And I can answer any other questions if anyone has any, and that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Any other public comments? Heather, could you go through and make the findings, you know, for the Commission?
Certainly. And so in this case, it is a map modification. So we, it's a slightly different set of findings than you would have with just a variance. Forgive me, I'm just getting to that section of the staff report. So if you have your staff report available, the findings do start on page three. And in this, we speak to, just, I'll broadly review them, but we speak to the categorical exemption of the Class III exemption for new construction or conversion of small structures. And so in this case, we have an existing single-family residence. It's in a residentially zoned area, and so small additions such as a garage and front entry would be anticipated and expected as part of new, original new construction or subsequent additions to the residence. So this is why we feel that the Class III exemption would be applicable here. And again, just reiterating what Mr. Altman said, the project does bring the property into conformance as it relates to parking and does provide that protected ingress and egress while still providing ample snow storage and removal areas. We then speak to the subdivision itself and the modification of it, so that would be the finding number two. Within that, it speaks to whether or not the proposal would significantly alter the subdivision map. And in this case, it does not. Again, it's just a small residential addition on a residentially zoned property and falls within the expectation of what we would see on a property such as this. Again, finding two B, not really having any impacts that are adverse to the subdivision map or the subdivision map act. And really, the rest of these findings, two C, D, and E, really go on to speak to the residential compatibility and its suitability for the site. Many of the explanations I went through in my presentation about why this location was proposed as opposed to further to the interior of the site. And then the final, two E, rather, the granting of the subdivision modification will not materially be detrimental to the public welfare or interest to the property or surrounding neighborhood. So again, the findings for this are centered on the map modification. Clayton and/or EJ might want to supplement anything that I've had to say, but we, from the staff perspective, feel that we met the findings to support a recommendation of approval.
All right. One of the things I didn't see in here is requirement for fire-safe materials. The subdivision, Bear Creek subdivision, actually commented on the subdivision, I believe, to the north, requiring fire-safe materials of all new construction, so I'd assume we would expect the same for this project, and I was wondering if that could become a condition?
We can certainly add that as a condition. The Bear Creek BCPC, they will have their own conditions for the project in terms of materials that are used, and so that is one stopgap measure for, to ensure that those materials are used, as well as the fire department approval itself. But we could certainly include that condition as this to make it an even more robust statement and requirement.
All right. Yeah, the only thing I would add to that is condition number six is regarding fire protection and defers to the North Tahoe Fire Protection District, which is required to review and approve their residential addition plan.
Okay. I just know that Bear Creek subdivision was quite adamant about the adjacent subdivision using only fire-safe materials, so I thought that's appropriate here. So, all right. Other comments or questions from the public? Oh, I see a raised hand. Actually, Mr. Altman, you've already commented, so with that, I don't see any other raised hands. Public comment period is closed, and we bring it back to the Commission for a decision. Yes, Rich?
Let's see. Yeah, I just want to verify something, Heather. Let me see. I think I'm reading that with this addition, the driveway will be, from the edge of the building, it'll be within 23 feet of the road, so that gives 23 feet to the pavement?
Yes.
That's correct?
Correct.
Well, that, I guess partly, one of the questions that comes up is if there's a desire to future widen the road, and does this encroach a little bit into the easement, into the county's road easement?
So in this case, I will speak to this, but I do have Ed Staniforth on the line, who's with Engineering and Surveying, so he can clarify anything that I may not get entirely correct. But you are correct that it is 23 feet from the closest point of the garage to the existing edge of pavement. Within the 30-foot mapped front setback, there is a 10-foot road widening easement. This is a private road, and so not under the county's purview. The road may be allowed to be widened per that easement, but no, this garage and front entry encroachment do not go into that 10-foot easement.
Okay, so I guess we're fairly confident that they'll be able to maintain the 20-foot required distance to the pavement even with future changes?
From the face of the garage to the edge of pavement?
Yeah, I guess, you know, in Tahoe, we've, before, it becomes a problem if you don't have enough room on the driveway to park cars when the snow plows are coming by.
Again, Ed can clarify if I misspeak somewhat, but in this case, it would still be, it's not a county-maintained road, so I don't believe that 20-foot requirement would still be applicable. Ed, could you confirm, please?
Yeah, any decision to widen the road would be done by the HOA, and the county would not be involved whatsoever. So with their approval of the project, you know, this may be a future problem for them, but not for the county. So the county has no objection, or DPW has no objection to the proposed project.
Okay, so I would assume then that the county does do the snow removal?
Correct. Yeah, it's done by the HOA.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions of the Commission? EJ, I see you want to say something?
Hey, Chairman, I just wanted to let you know that Brad Altman, who was on the line, is the applicant. If there was further questions for, or if he had something added?
I didn't realize that. So Brad Altman, if you would like to raise your hand, we will allow you to discuss the project.
Thanks, EJ, for the opportunity. So I just wanted to quickly address the commenter question about fire-safe material. This plan, pending approval of the decision of the Board today, has been submitted in parallel to the Placer County Building Department for their review, and the, all the materials, exterior sidings, windows, et cetera, soffits, eaves, are in conformance with Chapter 7 soffits, eaves, are in conformance with Chapter 7A of the California Building Code. Chapter 7A is dedicated to the wildland urban interface. So even though the house is existing, right? And so, it was built, I think, in the '70s. And so, it does not itself have all fire-safe material. The garage will be in conformance with Chapter 7A of the California Building Code.
Thank you. Other questions? EJ, maybe you could answer. Because I believe when we approved that subdivision to the north, it went beyond California Fire Code. Basically, it was non-combustible materials. The only potentially combustible material was heavy timber that was allowed in that subdivision. And it gives, I recall Bear Creek subdivision was adamant that they do that because of the fire danger. So it kind of feels like if they were adamant about it, they should be adamant on any additions in their subdivision.
Yeah. And that was all new construction. That project that was approved, as is this residential addition, would be new construction.
This is new construction, correct. All right. Other questions of the commission? Chair will accept the motion then, or motions. There's two required actions here. So could we go back one slide, Jeremy? There we go. Thank you. Is there a motion?
On my butt.
Here, take this one. There you go.
Okay. I'm sorry. I gotta get retrained again. I'll move that the planning commission find that the project is categorically exempt from any review under sequo pursuant to provisions of Section 15303 and 15305 of the California Environmental Quality Act, Guidelines and Sections 18.36050 and 1836070 of the Placer County Environmental Review Ordinance, Class III, new construction or conversion of small structures, Class V, minor alterations and land use limitations because of exemptions consist of minor alterations and land use limitations in areas with an average slope of less than 20%, which do not result in any change in the land use or density and is for the construction of a residential accessory structure, garage, and guesthouse. The subject parcel is located in an existing residential area with a residential use currently on-site. As such, those exemptions apply to the proposed project in that the modification to the parcel would in fact be a minor alteration to this property and is improvements and would be constructed of a small accessory structure, garage, covered entryway, guesthouse, and exterior deck.
Commissioner Sevison, if I could. I believe the sequo exemption recommendation presented by staff on this action item is just slightly different from the one that you've read off. And that it's just a slightly different section.
So you want?
So if possible, I think staff is recommending the recommendation that's posted up there or the one that's in the staff report under Recommendation 1 on page 3 for the DOD's subdivision.
So we want it to be like on the screen, not on, in the agenda, then?
Correct.
Yes. That's probably.
Can I just say, as shown on the screen? Or do you want me to read it?
Unfortunately, no. We need you to read it in. I apologize.
Read it in. Find that the project is categorically exempt from review under sequo pursuant to Sections 15303 of the California Environmental Quality Act, Guidelines and Sections 18.36.050 of the Placer County Environmental Review Ordinance, Class III, new construction or conversion of small structures.
All right. Do we have a second?
Mr. Cannon, second.
Oh, Mr. Cannon, okay. So we have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
I have a first from Mr. Sevison, a second from Mr. Cannon. So a vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. DiMattei?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
And Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. The second is to approve the subdivision map extension. We'll ask for a motion.
Do you have a revised motion for this one?
It's up on the screen.
So the one requested by staff is the one that's on the screen. If there is an interest in adding a condition.
You want it read into the record, then?
Yes.
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 Okay. Approve the subdivision map modification in the Bear Creek subdivision, Lot 113, to allow for a 17.3-foot front setback where there is a required 30-foot map setback for instance, John Scott Trail, in order to construct a single-car garage and covered front entry, supported by the findings and the subject to the conditions contained in the staff report. Period.
That's perfect.
Commissioner Cannon, second.
All right. Would the motion maker in second consider adding a condition for requiring fire-safe, fire-resistant materials on the new construction?
Yeah. But I think the building department that currently does that now, any permit, they would do that, I think. At least, my experience has been that you have to use fireproof roofing material, for sure. Now, I don't know about treating sidewalls, other parts of a building, but I do have experience in that.
So I mean, we, councilors have proposed language, if you want to ensure, if he could, if you're willing to do that, Larry.
Oh, I'm convinced that it's going to have to happen anyway. So yeah, it's fine.
So proposed language to meet the chair's concerns would be an addition to the condition of approval, number six.
Okay.
So that condition currently reads, "The applicant shall comply with any conditions imposed by Cal Fire or the serving fire district, North Tahoe Fire Protection District." The suggested addition would be after district, to include the following phrase, comma, "and shall use only fire-safe materials for construction of the garage and front entry," period.
So add to my motion?
Commissioner Cannon, second.
All right. We have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
I have a first from Mr. Sevison, a second from Mr. Cannon. So vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. DiMattei?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. And Mr. Altman, I apologize. I didn't see your name in the staff report. So I didn't realize you were the applicant. Okay. All right. Let's see here. Let me get to the right agenda item.
We'll skip right to lunch.
Oh, just a minute. We, yeah. We need to read this statement, "The decision of the planning commission may be appealed by anyone who appeared at today's hearing and provided comment, or anyone that submitted written comments on the item. An appeal must be filed within 10 days of today's date and shall be accompanied by a filing fee of $619." Thank you. All right. The next timed item is the Palfriman Ridgewood Highlands, Number 3 subdivision map modification. Members of the public may now raise their hands. Press star nine if you are calling in to begin queuing in for public comment on this item, which will not begin until the item presentation is complete. Stacy Weidra, Senior Planner, will be presenting this item. Good morning.
Hello, planning commissioners. I'm Stacy Weidra with the Tahoe Planning Office. And the item before you today is another subdivision map modification. And this one, to quickly get you oriented as to where it's located, is, it is located in the basin, the Tahoe Basin, specifically within the Ridgewood Highlands, Number 3 subdivision, specifically located at 4420 North Ridge Drive, Lot 165, as shown here, highlighted in red or orange on the slide. It is zoned residential, single-family, and located within the Cedar Flat Subdistrict of the Tahoe Basin Area Plan, which is the governing document for this area. The subdivision that was created back in March of 1960 recorded a 25-foot map setback along all of the frontages of the properties within the subdivision at that time. Specifically, this property is a corner lot. So it has frontages along Lily Lane as well as North Ridge Drive. The subject property, oh, there we go. The subject property currently is constructed with a single-family residence and a front-deck area. It has two existing locations of its parking. One area, which is located off of Lily Lane, which is located within primarily the right-of-way. A small portion of it is in, on the property with a path that leads to the deck area here of the existing residence. The other parking area is located over here in a unimproved dirt parking pad, or parking area, I should say. And the location for the garage is located in this northern, northwestern portion of the property. The applicants, and I can mention that the applicant is here today in the audience with us. And him, together with the owners, explored many different options or alternatives to the placement of where they proposed the garage. On this area over here, and I have pictures that I'll go into as well, but this just gives us a good overview. This area over here has a little bit more of a slope, so a little bit more disturbance and tree removal would be required on this side. If they had put it closer, they had to contend with the corner. So site distance was also something they had to explore and contend with. In this area over here is where they landed. And ultimately, this area does contain the most flat area, so least amount of disturbance, as well as minimal tree removal would be needed. However, the other critical part of why they are proposing it on this side is how it ties into the existing residence. And I'm going to flip to the next slide just so you can get a better look at it. And I'm happy to go back and forth if it would help. But the residence, the garage, is trying to tie into the existing residence for a number of different reasons. One, the owner, they're trying to avoid any and all stairs. She's getting older. And they would like it to have no stairs for her. And so, the, what they propose to do is convert this existing bedroom into like a mudroom or new entryway into their house. And then, the garage, proposed here with living space above, and you can see, it's labeled studio, but we define it as a guesthouse per the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency Code of Ordinances, so TRPA's Code of Ordinances. There's no kitchen or, you know, it cannot be rented. It's what we call a guesthouse and has limitations of 640 square feet or less. And so, that's what the applicants intend to use this for. Again, not to be rented out. It's going to be intended for a live-in care provider is the goal. So these are building elevations, just to, again, get you acquainted to what is proposed. It is a two-story with a covered access to get into the main residence with the living quarters above, and then the deck off the front. So specifically, the project is proposing a 16-foot setback from the front property line while maintaining a distance of 24 feet from the front of the garage to the edge of traveled way. So vehicles parked in front of the garage will not be sticking out into the traveled way as well. So here's some site photographs that, again, I'll just reiterate what I spoke of earlier. So this is that area off of Lily Lane, and this is that parking space that's located half in the right-of-way and half on-site. As you can see here, and sorry, there's still quite a bit of snow out there. Probably will melt this weekend. But it does have a slight upslope. Hard to tell in here, but if you look at the topo map. So this area, again, was explored, but also it would have had more difficulties of tying into the existing residence and to, again, avoid stairs where possible. And then you can see some trees over here as well. This is the slide off of North Ridge Road, and it shows where the existing unimproved parking pad is. But this location is entirely on their property. Here's the existing residence. And then you can see here, this is where that, off of Lily Lane, that's where that parking spot is. And again, I'll point out, it's rather close to that corner intersection. So I'm, I know our DPW folks are, I'm very pleased with them moving their parking over onto North Ridge Drive if this were to be approved. And we actually have a condition of approval requiring that they remove and revegetate this area so that no future parking can continue. So this is the location of which the garage is proposed. And as you can see, it's a lot more flat, you know, minimal trees, or if any. And so, again, when the applicant and architect explored the site, they looked at all options of where it would not only be the environmentally superior location, but also how it could meet the needs of the owners. So we did have a neighbor meeting on Tuesday, and I believe you did receive some public correspondence. So I'd just like to go over a few slides that will help with that correspondence. And I do believe that the neighbors are here today who would also like to speak. So this is, again, just to kind of, you know, giving you some aerial views. And this is the subject property. And this is the neighboring property of the folks that have written in. And so, this is, this line here is showing the one closest to the road is the 20-foot setback from the property line. I have to note that with a recent zoning text amendment, the front setback on this side is 20 feet, but the setback, it's now a street-side setback, is 10 feet on this side. So a little different with this new street-side setback on a corner lot. But nonetheless, we still have that 25-foot map setback. So ultimately, those setbacks are not applicable. So we just need to focus on the 25-foot, which is the dash line here, located farther back on the site. So these are the adjoining property views. Again, just to help you guys understand the neighboring parcel, this is their house. This is the subject property for today. Again, this is a little bit more closer look. Again, here's the house. The garage is proposed right here. This is their existing garage. And this is their residence. And I want to point out this window right here. That is their dining room window that they reference in their correspondence. So specifically, again, I'm just moving in closer a little bit for you guys. Again, here is that window of which they are speaking from. And this, I just want to point out, this is the stake here that shows, that's the 20-foot mark from where the garage would start. So right here, I'm sorry, this is 20 feet back. So 16 feet roughly would be here where the garage would start. So the face of the garage would be roughly right in here. So, and then, I stole this slide. And I'll let the architect speak to this. But this was a, so the architect put this together just to kind of show the angles from the existing window. Again, he can speak to that more of, you know, how he put this slide together. And then, I just wanted to give you guys sort of a street view of what exists out there today. And I do want to point out that sadly, up in the Tahoe area, many, many, many years ago, when projects came in, the subdivision maps weren't necessarily looked at to see if there was a map setback. So sadly, and maybe correctly, we always looked at the zoning ordinance or the requirement for the setbacks of the guiding principal documents, not really taking note of the subdivisions. And there's not a lot, but there are a few. And so, in my research of reviewing this project, I did find at least four properties that actually got variances and not map modifications. So there's just a little disconnect. But, you know, moving forward, we now know of this. And, you know, we're correcting these. Probably why we have three on today's agenda. So with that said, it's not that uncharacteristic to have these structures located closer to the street or even in that mapped setback for this subdivision in this area. So with that, staff recommends that the planning commission determine the project to be categorically exempt. I do want to say, because I also received a voice message from Mr. Garabedian, this project site is also in the high severity hazard area. And again, the project is conditioned to comply with the North Tahoe Fire requirements. I also know that the- I also know that the applicants have not gone to the fire department yet because they're very much in the conceptual design. They didn't, they haven't advanced to, you know, full-blown engineering to get ready for the building permit submittal. So I don't have the, you know, North Tahoe Fire sign-off at that level, but they were routed the project, and we received no comments from them based on this. So they are aware and they know, you know, if it comes in for a building permit, they will review it in accordance with their rules and regulations. So with that, we are requesting that you determine the project to be categorically exempt for two classes, Class 3, which is new construction, and then Class 5, minor alterations to land use limitations. And also approve the subdivision map modification in the Ridgewood Highlands Number 3 subdivision, specifically for Lot 165, to allow for a 16-foot front setback where a 25-foot map setback along North Ridge Drive is required in order to construct a two-car garage, a covered entry, a guesthouse, an exterior deck, and all of these supported by the findings in the staff report and subject to the conditions of approval. So that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer your questions.
Questions of the commission of Stacy?
Could we go back to the slide that had the pickup truck?
Yeah.
On the Ridgewood?
This one?
Yeah. Would it, if they put the garage where the truck is, would it not be invasive to the neighbor's window if it was setback that over there?
You know, that would probably be a question of the neighbors. I, if I may, I'll go real quick. So this is, so this is where the truck is on this side of the tree.
Right.
So their window is right here, so you can kind of see that line of sight, if that helps and answers your question.
Can you go back to the slide that has a stake where you said it was 20 feet?
Yeah.
Please, thank you.
Oh, too far? So here's the stake, and then we're roughly 16 feet from that.
So what's the setback for that window on that house? Is it 20 feet? So that, according to the architect's drawing, it looks like it's not, but looking at that picture, which may be directly in view of that window?
The structure would be, yeah, the structure would be constructed.
So it looks like they're pretty parallel to each other?
Yeah. The garage proposed is, would be in front of?
I think your previous slide showed actually the lot.
This one?
That one.
Yeah.
You can see.
There we go, yeah. So yeah, the garage is forward of the existing residence, and the window is roughly right there.
And if it went on the Lilly Lane, it wouldn't obstruct anybody? And why would it not go there, just for slope reasons?
Slope and tie into the existing residence to minimize disturbance, tree removal, and again, to minimize stairs.
Well, are they going to not have to remove trees? Because it looks like there's trees in the way to put that garage.
Yes, they will have to remove one. I can let the architect also give you more detail of the tie-in to the house. I do know he is here today.
Okay. All right, that was it, thank you.
Other questions of Stacy?
Yeah, a question. You call this a guesthouse, but in the staff package, I believe you referred to it as an ADU.
No, residential accessory dwelling, so in the Tahoe Basin, right, it's not an, it's not an ADU. It is not to be rented out. It is just a residential accessory structure.
Okay, that's my mistake then, okay.
All right. At this time, does the applicant have anything to say?
Pretty shy guy.
Oh, is he?
Very shy, and he's handicapped.
Good morning. Thank you, Stacy. My name is Ron Driller. I'm the architect and working with the owners at 4420 North Ridge Road up in the Ridgewood Highlands. Stacy's done a wonderful job of laying out why, you know, the needs for a garage here in Tahoe. It's basically stating the obvious with all the snow that's, that we've received. Personally, I'm surprised that the Palfermans have lived in this house as long as they have without a garage. And, but, you know, health and age, you know, affect all of us, and now they're looking forward to remaining here and having a garage. Beverly is getting older and assistance is welcome. When we, you know, looked at this, the two potential locations, we chose this one because of the opportunity to get a level access. A level access in Tahoe is just unheard of, and here we have an opportunity that's, you know, even with zero steps. So we thought it was, the north side was a perfect fit because, you know, the level access is possible, and we're taking advantage of being shielded by the property to the north at 4430 by their own detached garage. So our thinking was that there was already a garage blocking any views of their south, so we would just tuck ourselves in there, have two driveways that would be advantageous for, you know, snow removal and all the other things. So we thought this was a really, you know, good location, and with the level access, felt it was, you know, the appropriate one. The, as you've heard, the owners to the north are voicing some concern regarding view loss out of that one window that Stacy mentioned. The neighboring house is a typical gable, meaning their views are towards the street, which is westward, you know, the primary views, the house orientation, and out the rear towards the east. And, but, as it came as a surprise to us when, you know, they voiced their concern, we had a phone conversation with the owners as to, you know, if we can move, if we could change, you know, what we can do about, you know, the location that we've chosen. The, as stated, the primary concern for the Palfermans, you know, the owners of the subject parcel, is to gain, you know, covered parking and easy access. The reason for, this would be a one-story garage proposal, but the reason for the living space above is to displace the one bedroom that's being used as a new mudroom to gain access to the, to their home. So its sole purpose is in case any assistive living, you know, help is required. So no renting out, no anything like that is needed. To better understand the location of the proposed garage and everything else, this slide shows, you know, the two lines that Stacy pointed out. One is, you know, Placer County Standard, you know, 20-foot setback, and in this case, what we're looking at is the 25-foot subdivision map. It shows the four parcels that you see here. It shows that they're all fairly close, if not right on the 20-foot, at the 25. And again, this is a graphic put together from Google Maps. I chose that intentionally because we don't have a survey of the street, so we just used a relative comparison. So I'm not trying to skew things. Anyone that wants to can look this up and find the same graphic. And this is why I also placed the aerial above it showing the homes. The homeowners, the homeowners to the north have raised some question of the accuracy of this, you know, without a survey of their lot. Yeah, I mean, I'm guessing it's a foot or two, you know, within a foot or two of where we have. Is there a way for me to go forward or backward on these? Do I push buttons?
Yeah. That goes, there you go. That goes forward and then left.
Okay, technology. Oh, going the wrong way. Bear with me here. There. So I went back out there again after our meeting with the adjoining homeowners to see, you know, I'm not wanting to go on their property. I took some pictures, you know, which have been included in Stacy's work, and I put together this graphic, and this is a combination of the site plan that is accurate for this subject parcel, and then, you know, marrying that with Google Maps for the adjoining parcel and from the window. So it's clear that a view, there is a view loss. There's no denying that. But there are also, there are two trees which also obstruct or obscure their view, and the view is shown on some of the street photos, you know, going down there is of that. So it's not of the lake, it's nothing special. I don't want to downplay the fact for light and just having certain views and what people are used to. But it's my feeling that the homeowners to the north are, they're afraid to lose anything. And I find, you know, which I respect that, I'm also seeing that the current situation as it is is somewhat limited, and the garage in this proposed location is not, you know, not terrible. And for the programmatic reasons, it's, you know, a fantastic location, at least for the owners' sake. So I guess in conclusion, I feel that the homeowners to the north are just exaggerating their, their loss respectfully, you know, but that's it. So if there's any questions?
Any questions of the commission? Yes. Nathan?
Go ahead.
Can you just help me understand why the garage can't be pushed back farther? I don't understand, perhaps, even in the rationalization, why it needs to be within the setback.
There are, I'm, see if I can get to Stacy's. There are two bedrooms in the back of the house right now. One bedroom, as we mentioned, is, you know, planned to be a new access point. The, to our right, the bedroom there is a master bedroom, and that has, the window back there is an egress window. So we have to be respectful of, you know, maintaining, you know, the egress to it. So yes, we can move it back. It gets to be, it just creates some more hardship. You know, there's just more open, there's light and everything else that's there, but it certainly could.
Yeah, I mean, even up to the bedroom window, or at least parallel to the other garage on the adjacent property, I think, it's not clear to me why it would have to be moved up that far. It won't obstruct the master bedroom egress, and, you know, even if it did obscure the view from the current property owner's home, I think that that makes more sense. But I don't know, I, I'm not, I'd like to consider maybe pushing the garage back a little bit.
Okay, I think, you know, a little bit is, I think, you know, talking to the owner, and we can, I think, comfortably go back to the 20-foot setback, which is, you know, Old County Standard, and it also is fairly close to, if we look at, if we look up and down this street. Yeah. So where's the one that I had? If we look up and down the street here, it appears that, you know, 4450, which is the furthest one property to the left up this hill, reaches that 20-foot setback, as well as the properties just to the north also appears to hit that 20-foot setback. And I'll just note also that, you know, and Stacy mentioned that these were built a long time ago, that the property to the north, it appears to be at the 20-foot setback, but within that, there are, you know, better, you can barely see in the photo up at the left that they have approximately a four-foot or so deck that actually encroaches further into that. So the front of that deck is about where we have proposed our garage in that same line. And the front of the house of this parcel, or this property, is approximately where the 20-foot setback would be, just for a front-back orientation.
So Stacy, let me be clear. 20 feet is the county setback, 25 feet is the subdivision setback, correct?
Actually, it's, 25 feet is the map setback, and then because it's a corner lot, it's actually 10 feet, street-side setback along North Ridge.
Under the county?
Under the New County standard.
Okay. So it would meet the county standard, so we're only looking at the subdivision?
Correct.
Okay. But it appears the house to the north goes up to that 20-foot setback?
It appears, I mean, from?
Well, and keep in mind, the parcel to the north doesn't have that street-side setback, so it is 20 feet.
Okay.
Front.
All right.
A 25-foot.
Okay, but they did go right up to the 20 feet on that other, okay. Approximately, understanding surveys in Tahoe. Okay, thank you. Other questions?
No, I, maybe just, you're bad, talking about surveys.
The egress that they have, so they have a sliding glass door coming out of that master bedroom? Is that correct?
No, it's a window.
Oh, it's just a window?
Just a window.
So can we just relocate the window, since they want to block their neighbor's window, and we could set this garage back? Are they still going to have light come in? We put a new window in there? I mean, I don't see a reason, like, like Colley said, we can move that back if we go back to your drawing, where that window is, and they wouldn't lose any light. In fact, they'd probably add more light if we put a small window with the garage in.
We, make way the right way, Stacy.
Yep.
Yeah, that one.
Yeah, so.
I'm just asking them questions. Are we negotiating this?
No, I mean, your question is, yeah, your question is a, is?
I'm not negotiating, I'm just asking if it can be done.
It can be done. And we, I mean, there's, we went through many, many options, and that's certainly one of them. The size of the garage, we made a little bit deeper because of the owner's vehicle, his work service vehicle is a little bit deeper and longer, so that controls the size of, the depth of the garage. The width of the garage, we made a little bit narrower than what I'd call a Tahoe standard, it's 22 feet rather than 24 feet. So the volume, the box is, you know, kind of set for what the owners need. To push it back would then create a little bit of a chasm, you know, an awkwardness for things, but it could be moved back and it could be attached to the house. These are all things that, you know, they require, you know, probably more, more cost to adjoin the two. Again, it's not a, you know, major consideration, but it is still a consideration that they felt that this being detached suited, you know, any kind of living care that needed to be above them and so forth. So this is what they were hopeful to get.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
I have one more question for Stacy. Are you allowed to have two driveways on a corner lot? So they're going to have two encroaches to their place where most people on the subdivision only have one?
They're getting rid of one.
Oh, no.
Pardon me? They're getting rid of the one-on-one.
Oh, they are?
And there's a condition of approval.
Okay. I thought I heard that, but it wasn't sure. Thank you.
This would just have one driveway access.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for Stacy also, I think. So we've had some discussions about the fact that there are other properties in the area that have variances and that sort of thing, which is a relevant discussion, it's an important question to ask and a good answer. But those may have been approved without objection, right? But those may have been approved without objection, right? So today we have an objection from a landowner right next door. So fundamentally, since you're, this is maybe a difficult question, but your, your staff, and I'd like staff's view on it before we get other people's view. Fundamentally, we have a landowner who is compliant and a landowner who chooses or is requesting, with great justification, certainly personal issues, but to be non-compliant. Why do you feel, as a staff member, that the landowners' rights that are currently compliant are trumped by a person who is attempting to propose a, you know, a change here? That it would make them basically non-compliant? In other words, why are the landowners' rights that are compliant here and who have concerns about this, why are those rights trumped here, in your view? Why should they be trumped?
I mean, if I could, I'd like to respond to that.
Yeah, well, it's probably more your question, but I need to lay it out on the table.
And so my understanding is that issue with the neighbor and the view came up after the writing of the staff report. That's, that's new information. I'm not sure what we had from the neighbor prior to that. So this is new information to staff.
Okay. Okay, well, I struggle with that question. And I just don't really, particularly since we have, and I know we're talking now in here, but particularly since we have other alternatives, it appears. So anyway, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Right. Other questions of the commission? All right, at this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Anyone in the audience who, which is to speak?
I'm Steve. I'm the husband of one of the three daughters that still own the property. And for various reasons, none of them could be here, and I'm unfortunate for that. But thank you for your time. And thank you for your time too, Stacy. So as I've been listening to this, I've kind of modified my approach to this discussion a little bit. And I think I'd like to say that we don't have any objection whatsoever to Bev and Bentley having a garage. We've thought it'd been insane of them to have not have one all these years. That being said, this, the first we heard about this was when we got notification of this meeting. We had no knowledge that this was even planned. And so, that being said, we are, we think it's great for them to have the building. And we just think it should be within the confines of the existing subdivision rules, which is the 25-foot setback. Turns out, when we got all this information and then we saw the Google Maps, we went out and measured. Our home there is 28 feet back. So regardless of what Google Maps shows, it's 28 feet from the street. Now, you'd have to get a surveyor out there to know exactly how far the asphalt feathers off the street to the wall. But that's where it's at right now. None of the homes actually going up the street. I used a laser measuring device and none of them are inside of 25 feet up that street, regardless of what Google Maps says. But we wouldn't want to set a precedence, we don't think, on that street, allowing a 16-foot change to that or a 20-foot change to that. We understand their concerns with the level. My parents and her parents could no longer come to Tahoe because they became unable to navigate and walk and go upstairs and downstairs. And we totally understand that. We're getting our own agent, that that's coming up for me too. That being said, we thought just move it back the nine feet and problem solved. But apparently that was not the case. So we, the two trees that they depicted in the window that kind of block our view out of that window, they're also going to be, have to be removed because they've been, you know, they're diseased trees as we all are having around Tahoe now, lots of diseased trees. So those trees have to come out this year. We didn't take them out last year because we already took out six. So I have to take out some more. So I guess, and since we bought the property and the existing rules existed, you know, that's kind of the rules that we play by. I thought it was a little odd that an architect would propose a plan that doesn't meet the setback rules of the property. All of my building projects I've ever done, setbacks are setbacks. You don't really try to deal with those. In this case, it appears that it does allow a more level access to the property, and I'm all for that. I just don't think that, I think they can achieve both goals, it just may require some rampage. You know, that kind of thing when you have people that are becoming more and more mobility challenged. I've had to build them myself. That being said, I think I've run out of time. So, thank you, gentlemen, for your time.
Thank you.
And Stacy, for your-
Others in the audience who want to speak?
Hello, my name is Steve Turner. It's nice to meet you. I am the brother-in-law of Steve. We represent two of the sisters and are here on their behalf. I'm present here to kind of make sure that people see the face of the, all the owners and get a representation of seeing somebody live. I think it's important to have that visibility. And I'm glad to be here and I'm glad you allow us here. I want to really uphold what Steve said, and that is, is the families, as far as I know, are willing to try to negotiate. The major problem is, is how close it is to the street, quite frankly, or at least the front of the house. The side of the house is on, like was pointed out, is on a garage and really doesn't create a huge issue if you start moving it away from the street. The stuff right now that I've seen is a 24-foot driveway off of the edge of the side, or edge of the street. And 24 is kind of a short parking stall in Tahoe. And it doesn't allow, I think you had some road clearing issues as far as if you really have 24 feet. If you have a large vehicle, like was explained to you, it may not fit that well in that 24-foot spot, which would mean moving it back would be helpful from another standpoint, and that is to have sufficient access. Right now, the garage portion is 28 feet. A typical garage is 20 feet. A large garage is 22 feet. This is 28. If you just made it a regular-sized garage, you would probably fix the eight-foot overlap with what is being said as being the setback. One thing I will say about the setback, because I was out there just yesterday measuring, and I think Commissioner DeBays, the answer is 28 feet from the edge of the street. It's very hard to tell where the property line, or the track property lines are. It's just, you don't know when you're out there. I'm encouraged by what everybody has said here. You're asking the same questions as we've tried to ask. And in my opinion, the family has not heard a clear answer to why some of these alternatives couldn't be examined and why they couldn't proceed. What we would ask for you is if you could enter on our behalf and encourage and foster some of the discussions that really haven't occurred to our family at this point in time. And we'd appreciate your help in making that happen. I guess in, the final item that I had that was, is, is the long-term, the long-term aspects of this and what happens when these owners either sell or pass the ownership on?
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? If not, Sue, I see a hand raised?
Mr. Garabedian, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, Mike Garabedian, again. Let's talk about fire hazard ignition. If one structure is fully engaged, any structure within 30 feet is going to be ignited. And that is taking, still situations, if there wind or ember or other conditions, that's going to be a lot closer. That's a fundamental question here that should cause staff and under sequoia to be looking at if it's a fire-wise community, or if the International Association of Fire Chief, if the fire district follows their fire-adapted communities, or if they look at the ready, said go. What is evacuation affecting the area? You know, what are fuel breaks that might affect this area? These are tiny, tiny lots, what, 14,000 square feet for this one? There, this is a whole subdivision issue. You should not be piecemealing the subdivision by changing one here, one there, one there, without looking, somebody looking at. This is a planning function. It's embarrassing that the planning staff and the planning department and you aren't trained. One of you certainly must, I know Richard has experience with this. You should be applying your knowledge of fire ignition to these people. These people that want to put themselves in a greater harm's way by having a new structure right next to their house. I don't know how to emphasize it more than to, than to try, because we can't do your job for you. I can't educate you about this stuff, and you should be concerned. It's great that you're concerned about the view set and the view. An even more significant issue, just as significant for a need to understand for planning is the protection of properties in this area for what's consuming California, what's killing and consuming people in their homes and their ability to escape in fires and things like that. And it's being totally neglected by the staff. And you are being left out in the lurch, and it's your responsibility to bring them and the architect and the people planning this into the picture, and you aren't, unless you start now. Please, start now.
Thank you. Are there other comments on Zoom? All right. In that case, I will close the public hearing at this point in time and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Actually, Stacy, if you could answer any questions that came up in the public comments, would be appreciated.
Actually, if I may, the architect has asked that if he could ask for a continuance of this hearing. And I think he'd like to regroup after hearing the comments that were received today, so.
Okay. Is there anything the commission has to do? Do we then continue this as a motion to a date uncertain or a date certain?
Yes, I would, you want to jump in? I was gonna suggest, yeah, continue it to an open date, then we would renotice it at such time it came back to you.
Okay.
I was gonna offer that same option up, if you want to add one thing.
Just to note that the continuance itself is something that would need to be made by motion and voted on.
So I'll accept the motion to continue this to a date to be determined?
Yeah, one, I want to make one, or clarification, or get confirmation from staff regarding the neighbors' residence. And there was one plan that showed where it abuts one of the setback lines. There's a 25-foot setback and 20-foot setback.
Right.
Shown. And, and this is information we can bring back as well. But the neighbor residence is built to the 20-foot setback, is that correct, as shown on that plan?
Right. And again, this information was received from the architect.
Okay, so that will be information that we'll need to confirm as well.
All right. So I'll accept the motion.
We'll see, we'll see what they come back with. But I'd like to make a motion that we continue Agenda Item 2, Mr. Chairman.
All right. So going back-
To an open date, yeah, thank you.
Okay, we do have a question though. And I'd say, is that something that is appropriate for the commission to ask? Or do we wait till they come back and let, obviously from your question, the applicant knows you'd like to see a survey, so.
And you certainly can make a motion requesting it, I believe, just by stating it here in the public hearing. Staff and the architect is aware of the interest, so, but you could also include it in a motion if you want.
Okay, so I'd like a motion to have that engineered survey brought to our attention?
Now, okay, we had two motions. I know he had spoken before the motion, so.
Yeah, that's fine.
So can we put them together?
Let's take your, or-
No, go ahead.
So we directly have a motion for continuance that's open and pending. So if we're not adding to that motion, then we would need to withdraw that motion.
Yeah, I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay. So then if you want to make a motion-
Mr. Demate.
So I'd like to make a motion to continue this and have an engineered survey brought to our next meeting, be it open date.
And do we have a second?
Second?
We have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Okay. I have a first from Mr. Demate, a second from Mr. Woodward. So a vote from Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Demate?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
No.
Mr. Seveson?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so that has been continued. Thank you, Stacy. The next timed item is a Phillips Bear Creek subdivision, lot number 65, subdivision map modification. Members of the public may now raise their hands, press star nine if you're calling in, to begin queuing in for public comment on this item, which will not begin until the item presentation is complete. Janie Blavin, associate planner, will be presenting this item. See her up on the screen.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Janie Balvin with the Planning Services Division in Tahoe City. I'm here to present the Phillips subdivision modification. The power in this office building just went out, so if you, my stream, I can switch to my cell phone, just so you know. The project is located at 2210 John Scott Trail in the Bear Creek neighborhood of Alpine Meadows. You can go to the next slide, please. It is a stone residential single family.
I'm wondering, could you, we should probably go to the phone because this-
65 in the Bear Creek.
Could you go to your phone and call in on the line, because you're breaking up pretty badly here?
You can go to the next slide, please.
Oh, you are? Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Give me just a moment, please.
Thank you. So if we can't hear it, that's, yeah. He's no audience. Probably should have done that before the motion. EJ and, there's a question regarding the last item that Larry wanted to ask. Is that appropriate? I mean, we are in this, but we don't have communications right now, so is that something that we could discuss?
So you want to do an additional discussion on the last item, is that?
It was about the last item, basically how the staff is going to be reviewing and resolving the issue. The approach the staff will be taking. And I understand Stacy's gone.
So since we've called this item, I guess it should probably wait till we conclude this item. But you can certainly have that discussion.
We'll have that discussion after this item.
And the basis to allow the discussion, obviously, is it's listed on the agenda, so.
Okay. And Sue, you said that we're ready? Okay, Janie, let's go again. Sorry.
Hear me now?
Yes, much better.
Okay, great. As you can see on this subdivision map, there's a 30-foot setback. It's made up of a 10-foot wide road easement plus a 20-foot building setback. Bear Creek runs directly parallel to the rear property line and has a 100-foot from center line setback. The parcel is surrounded on three sides by open space zoning, and there is a single-family dwelling to the east. John Scott Trail is a private road. Next slide, please. Lot 65 is currently developed with a two-story single-family dwelling. There is a parking pad at street grade with stone steps down to the front door. It's about an eight-foot drop in elevation between the parking pad and the front door there. And currently, it's just those stone steps that you can see in the photograph. Next slide, please. The owner would like to cover the path from the parking area to the front door. The locations of the existing residence and the existing parking area are driving the location of the proposed improvements for which the applicant is requesting approval of the subdivision modification. There are no changes proposed for the existing parking area or the existing residence. The project goal is a cover over the existing path. About 200 square feet of the structure is in the 30-foot mapped setback. And the applicant is requesting approval of a reduced setback. is requesting approval of a reduced setback for the proposed covering over the pathway. After reviewing the request, staff finds it to be in keeping with the intent of the original subdivision and is compatible with the neighborhood. One development to note, I learned this morning that through the HOA review process, the project was revised to increase the distance from the edge of pavement to the structure to improve conditions for snow removal operations, which are done not by the county because it is a private road, and the site plan that you see before you has been revised slightly. The location is generally the same, but the distance from the property line to the foundation of the structure is now four feet, and to the eve, it is 2 feet 10 inches to the property Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission take the following actions, subject to the conditions of approval. Next slide, please. And that is actually the old project. Now, there we go. Find the project categorically exempt from review under CEQA per Section 1503 of the CEQA guidelines and Section 18.36.050 of the Placer County Environmental Review Ordinance, which is Class III New Construction or Conversion of Small Structures. Next slide. And approve the subdivision modification in the Bear Creek subdivision, lot 65, to allow for a 4-foot setback, 2 feet 10 inches from the eve to the property line, where there is a required 30-foot map setback on John Scott Trail in order to construct a covered walkway, supported by the findings and subject to the conditions of approval in the staff report. Staff did receive a phone call from Mr. Garabedian this morning regarding the fire concerns, and condition number four of the recommended conditions of approval is a requirement to obtain approval from the serving fire district prior to construction, and we received correspondence during the review process from Steve McNamara, the division chief of North Hopewell Fire Protection District, and he had no comments or conditions on the project. And with that, I'm available to answer any questions.
All right. Are there questions of the commission of Janie? All right, seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. There is no one in the audience. Do we have persons on Zoom? Oh, I'm sorry, is the applicant available before we start? Thank you.
This is Erin Humphrey. I am the applicant's agent. I'm the architect on the project.
Okay, you're on.
Okay, yeah, so thank you for your time. I think Janie did a great description of the project. Essentially, the owner has owned the house for 40 years and wants to keep it in the family, so looking for ways to better access the house year-round. Therefore, a covered walkway would really provide that covered protection during the snow and make it safer access to the house. And then I did want to address the fire issue. The wildland urban interface requirements are required per code, and part of this project is reciding the house with a more fire-resistant siding, and that will be drawn into the covered walkway as well with heavy timber construction and very fire-resistant materials to address those concerns.
All right, thank you. All right, now, okay, we have a question of a commissioner for you?
Yeah, I was just wondering, I'm a little bit fuzzy on where the existing parking is on the map.
Could we go back to the site plan? I don't know. I thought Jeremy was running this, but I guess not. There we go. So the question, Janie, I don't know if you can see the site plan here, is where is the existing parking on the site plan?
You'll see a 90-degree turn in the proposed structure, and the pavement where the parking currently takes place is right at the end of the proposed structure there.
And that's adjacent to the roadway?
I'm sorry?
That's adjacent to the roadway?
Yes, it is sort of road shoulder parking, sort of in the middle of the property.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions in the commission? Right, we're back in the public hearing for persons on Zoom. Sue?
Mr. Garabedian, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Mike Garabedian, Placer County tomorrow. Well, any concern about an appeal on these three properties should be dismissed. Our job to try to figure out how to get the county to do its job, but I will say this. Placer County, for those of you who don't know, has the highest wooey concentration of all the counties. Now, who is first and foremost responsible for that? Well, it's the planning department, parcel review committee, the subdivision committee, and here you have old subdivisions coming for you piecemealed with this and that that should be given, have some major attention given to the question of fire, which is burning up the state, and people are dying in their homes, getting to their homes because of interstructure ignitions, and you name it. It's, of course, you understand snow issues and road setback issues and other issues. There's a new issue, there's a new issue that needs your attention and needs your training and needs the county to reverse its fire, inattention to fire. I said to the board of supervisors earlier this week that every agenda item of the parcel review committee should say what the fire hazard severity zone is, but it needs, and that's just a baby step, as I pointed out to them. The people need to be informed about what they're doing, so they know what they're doing in increasing their fire hazards, and you need to be aware of that. These are planning decisions, not just fire department decisions. You can't just hide behind them, or, and I'm not saying you're personally doing this, or the condition that they suggest, the kind of waiver condition that at the very end of all of these permits, it's almost like an excuse for not doing anything about fire prevention, so that whoever does this won't be able to recover from the county. It's just, it's just not enough. I ask you to look at your own knowledge about this issue and let the planning department know that you want to know more about this, even if the staff doesn't or isn't trained or is told to rely on the fire department or something else. It is within your discretion, your discretion to make community decisions in the public interest, in the public health, safety, and welfare. That is your responsibility to exercise your discretion, like you did on the last, to a certain extent, on the last one. Thank you for that, and thank you for getting involved in fire prevention from here on. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other raised hands? Okay, no other raised hands, so the public hearing is closed, and we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. One of the things that was brought up that we aren't concerned about fire, and, you know, I think that subdivision directly to the north of this, we looked carefully at the fire. We looked at the road system, and in fact, Bear Creek refused to connect it to improve the security of that subdivision or their subdivision, but we did take a look at the clearances, we looked at the building materials, and I think we are. Just building a building doesn't mean you're creating a fire hazard, especially if you build the building correctly in this location. So, you know, I think the planning commission has been looking at fire. I know we have talked about no wooden fences up against buildings, and I think the staff has been cognizant of fire, especially in Alpine Meadows, given that lengthy discussion on that previous subdivision and the requirements we placed on that. So just a comment, you know, I feel like this planning commission is concerned. So, all right. There you go. Now you're on.
Well, I see a little wrong with the application. I think the materials used perhaps in the first five or six feet from the pavement's edge or the edge of the road could be spoken to, and I think help maybe make that out of concrete or masonry or something, so that you have a beginning section of. I'm sorry, I'm talking.
I can hear, that's okay.
But to me, because I'm in that business, I think it would be an advantage not only to lessen the damage from snow removal in the wintertime, but it would, it would, it would be a better structure if you did the first four or five feet out of concrete or masonry or something that's not going to just get blown away in one winter. And I think, I don't see why we couldn't just amend the application to require masonry for the first few feet of this application and then have the bridge near into the house tied together, and I think it would make a much better product for them in the end, too, because when the snowplow goes by there at 40 miles an hour, and he's going to wipe out any fragile device, and so I would encourage him to maybe make the first four or five feet or whatever out of masonry, for example, or concrete or whatever, and then tie onto that and go along the rest of the way to the building with a bridge or whatever they plan to use, and maybe the, doing that would buy some life and have a better product in the long run.
I have a question for you, if I may.
Yeah, have it.
I know in the past, we've also required, yeah, it's on, we've also required any connection to a home be non-wood related, fencing, because we found that fires are often caused when a connection to the home is wood-related, and would we not also do the section closest to the home in your same recommended masonry concrete-style structure?
You know, the language we used in the previous Bear Creek subdivision, which goes back to the materials that are, you know, resistant to fire, you know, the subdivision was approved, it showed that you could actually build something with the concrete siding and with the rock and with the heavy timber that was, and so the language that Clayton used, I thought, I'm comfortable with that language, you know, for this project.
Okay. This is an interesting discussion. I just have a question, though. I mean, if we're going to levy this requirement on this particular project, we must be consistent, right?
Correct.
So it seems difficult to be, you know, it seems like it would be challenging to make this our responsibility, that every time something like this comes forward, we recall that we did this at Bear Creek or Pickett Project, and we should do it this time.
And what we have done in the past, so when we discussed wood fences would not come against a house, we recommended to the staff that the code be changed, but in the meantime, the staff reflect that. So again, I would request the staff consider a code change to require fire-resistant materials in these fire hazard zones, and that non-flammable materials would be within five feet of the house.
It seems like.
Go ahead.
Well, I think you addressed, you know, we're talking about a policy change, which is normally out of, is out of review.
We can make a recommendation, the board.
Yeah, we can make a recommendation. Although I do think that in this particular case, what Larry was talking about is something that could be included in the project. It's not something that's going to apply to everybody, but he was talking about, you know, the structure and technical structure, and it may be a cautionary thing that the architect wants to maybe respond to, but that could be something that we probably could address if the applicant really would go along with it.
Okay.
Well, I think there's, I think there's two aspects here. We're talking about fire for one, and the first piece of it should be somewhat fire-retardant, and also it should be resistant to damage by snow removal, because you got to know that in this area, when a snowplow goes by, it's a real experience, because it'll just take the railings right off of that, so there's going to have to be some extra considerations and thought put into if we approve it, the materials they use and the style of engineering and so forth be created that is going to have some longevity with it, not go down the first winter, because that would be a shame to get in the house and have a snowplow go by, then have a fire start, you couldn't even get out of the house. I guess you go down and eventually find your way out, but.
Yeah, well, I do kind of, I mean, looking where the parking is, if you have your car there and a snowplow goes by, then they're probably not going to be able to get their car out even, but at any rate, that's, those are all different problems that the applicant's got to face, but if we're talking about some structural additions to parts of, was this a bridge or whatever it is, I think we ought to give the applicant a chance to address that before we put it in a motion.
Right. First of all, I think Dan had a question of the staff and the approach, so, sorry, EJ, if you could address that.
Well, I'll start up. I mean, you know, there's, this commission's been very diligent about, you know, about, you know, projects in the high fire severity zones and, you know, and adding provisions for fire protection. We had the discussion about fencing around cellular facilities and having non-combustible fencing. It's come up today, you know, with covered walkways, residential structures, but we also have the building and fire codes, which I'll probably have Clayton jump into, so there, I think, we hear you as staff, we could add, you know, make sure these projects include those considerations and conditions, but at the same time, there are already codes in place, but I think this commission wants the assurance that, you know, they're going to be included with these projects that are under your consideration.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, so just to touch on that, the Placer County Code does, for the most part, just adopt the California Building Code for building requirements. There are some minor modifications, and certainly if the planning commission wants to request that when those revisions come in, that staff also look at modifying them to make them more fire-safe than the existing California Building Code, you can certainly make that kind of recommendation. When it comes to this project, if the commission is interested in amending a condition of approval, the condition of approval that would be amended would be number four, which currently states that the applicant shall comply with any conditions imposed by Cal Fire in the serving fire district. The last modification to that condition on the last project included the phrase "and shall use only fire-safe materials for construction," and then here it would be "of the covered walkway." Commissioner Seveson had expressed an interest in putting that requirement on the first few feet, so we could add another phrase that includes "for the five feet closest to the roadway" on that condition. So those would be, I guess, the place and the location of the modification.
Can we hear from, we have the architect on the line?
Yeah, I think if there's no more discussion, if the applicant could respond to the discussion the commission is having.
Hi, yeah, it's Erin again. Great discussion, and it is something that we have taken into account from the very start of this project. The short portion at the very end of the covered walkway that's closest to the drive has kind of a small storage area, and that will be pretty much enclosed, and it'll have a corrugated metal siding on it, so we thought that that was a really durable, fire-resistant material, but also durable against all the snow load that structure will face over the winter. And so it is, we're definitely taking into account all of these concerns about fire resistance. As far as the five feet closest to the building, I know that wooey talks about that as well, and I think if you are closer than even three feet, I believe, if I'm remembering correctly, that you have to comply with the wooey requirements, which is a fire-resistant material, they're non-combustible, so I don't know if that answers some of the concerns. You know, I guess specific materials, I mean, we'll be using heavy timber and metal. You know, I guess specific materials, I mean, we'll be using heavy timber and metal as our material palette, and a standing seam metal roof.
All right, thank you. You know, the statement that Clayton has put on the condition, I think, just covers, you know, fire-resistant materials, which I would be comfortable with, and I know based on Paradise, they said five feet, but as long as we have fire-resistant materials on that structure, especially in that subdivision in Alpine Meadows, I would be comfortable with that. I don't know if I would limit it just to the front five feet, but I think the architect has explained they have thought about the snow removal and plows, so it sounds like that's in the design, but I'd still like to see fire resistant for the entire structure.
Can this walkway be shortened so that's not so close to the street where it 90s into the covered walkway off the driveway? So it's further off the street? Looks like they're encouraging, only wanting to be like three feet off the street.
There's a lot of contours there. The lines, it goes down real fast, unfortunately.
Yeah. I mean, you're talking, you had mentioned snowplows going by at 40 miles an hour. If you're that close, why you put, you know, if he can't see the lines and there's four or five feet of snow there, or even six feet of snow if we have a heavy winter, we're going to put him in harm's way of possibly hitting that. It shouldn't be, I don't think is, should be that close to the road.
EJ, you were going to say something?
I know Ed stands forth with Engineering is on the line if he has anything to add to that question.
That would be helpful.
About snow removal. Thank you, Ed.
Yeah, that's a valid point, and yeah, a structure being that close to the roadway is subject to damage from the snowplow. However, as Janie mentioned, this is a private subdivision, and the snow removal and maintenance is done by the HOA, so it doesn't involve the county at all, and although, therefore, DPW has no objection to the progress.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion of the commission, Rich?
Yeah, did we hear that the HOA has approved this project as it exists?
Janie, I think you did mention that, but can you confirm that the Bear Creek HOA approved the project?
I know that it's currently under review, and I don't know if final approval has been obtained, but Erin could speak to that.
All right, Erin?
Yeah, we've had our second meeting, and this month will be the stakeout, but they have approved it for that next step for the stakeout and kind of neighbor observation as well, so we are moving forward in that process.
Make the motion.
Well, I just was going to suggest it, maybe if they're going to be the last word on this, let them meet first, and then we can act next month.
If it seems appropriate.
Make a motion. Is that a motion?
Well, no one seems to disagree, so yeah, I'll make that a motion.
So the motion, do you have any comments?
You agree with continue?
Homeowners group, or I guess it's homeowners group.
Homeowners approve.
Takes action on it.
If we approve it and it doesn't get approved there, can they still build it?
They can't get a building permit.
So I'm just wondering, what more information do we need in waiting? So I'm wondering, if they still need their approval to build it, if we can move this forward with what we know, why hold it up?
That's a good question. Can they go forward if the HOA says no and we approve it?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I guess my recommendation would be, we could add, if you, if the commission decided to move forward today, add a condition that requires HOA approval prior to issuance.
I like that.
On the other hand, is brought up, can they move that structure back off the road further, and I wouldn't mind seeing if the architect and the homeowners and the HOA could accommodate that and come back with the structure moved back.
I like that. I mean, I think everything we proposed, so I think we just wait and see what happens and have them come back with a better plan and come back with an HOA requirement.
We have a motion to continue, so is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a first and a second to continue this item to a undetermined date. Roll call, please.
And we'd like to hear the outcome of their further actions, engineer and homeowners association, fire department.
They have their blessings, I guess.
Yeah, because they could change it. It's a good point.
All right, roll call, please.
I have a first from Mr. Severson, a second from Mr. DiMattei, so a vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. DiMattei?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Mr. Hersag?
Yes.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. We look forward to hearing this again. All right, at this time, I think there was a question on a previous project and how the staff is going to be evaluating that project. I think, Larry, you had the question? So this was on the... No, this is not a public hearing. This is just a question to the staff and how the staff is going to evaluate the project at Garage that will be coming back to us, and the sightlines, whatever, so.
Yeah, so the neighbor issue came up just, you know, a couple days ago this week. There was a meeting with staff and the neighbors. However, although there wasn't any resolution today, it sounded like there was going to be resolution between the two parties, they just didn't, they didn't get to that point. So, yeah, I mean, from my standpoint, we'd like to have all that resolved before it gets before your commission. Not all the times we can do that, but we usually do our best diligence to get that to happen. So in this case, you know, we'll do the same thing. We'll probably get with all parties, you know, if there's a redesign, and then, you know, try to have some consensus before we bring it back to your commission.
I do think time is an element in this one, because whatever they're going to do, they got to get done pretty soon, because the snow's going to fly again, and that'll be the end of it, so I think we ought to give them a little leg up here if we could.
Yep.
And that'd be both projects that were continued, so.
Should I go home now, boss?
With that, if there are no other discussion items, the meeting is adjourned.